Please do your roll call, please.
Conant, present, deal?
Yes.
Freeman? Martyr?
Present.
Ramirez?
Present.
Hamlin? Waller's?
Yes, brother. Okay, now let's do the presentations, please. Presentations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of our which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know Perry is just exercising a bit since he's very ag... So, okay. So, if it's all right, we'll just wait here and we'll come back. I want to move on to the five. I didn't know if there's any more discussion or questions on the PMA presentation that we want to have this time.
Do we need to acknowledge he's present on the roll call, too?
You'll indicate that Perry's now president.
Oh, sure.
All right, anyway, anybody have any more questions? PMA presentation. Now, we move on to the presentation of the audit by Weber.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Gabriela Abad-Massu, Department Associate, and once again, I had the privilege working on the audit with Melissa and Sarah, and I'd like to thank you both for providing everything in order, and it looks like everything was accurate, so we didn't find any problems with the audit. The other, you see the clean and qualified opinion, which you can find on pages one, two, three. I'm just going to go over the management and special analysis and maybe the fund financial statement. I'm going to highlight any significant changes from last year, but if you have any questions, just stop me at any time. So, like I said, pages one, two, three is the clean and qualified opinion. Then on page seven, we have the statement of net position. Basically, it presents the assets, the liabilities in the net position of the district. So, overall, at the bottom, you can see the net position increased from eighteen million nine hundred to twenty million four hundred, so an increase of about one point four million dollars, or eight percent. The most significant changes, again, cash, where current assets in cash increased by a million dollars, including their investment receivables. So, overall, total assets, which includes the capital assets, is increased by three percent of seven hundred, or seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Liabilities, total liabilities decreased from four million five hundred to three million two hundred, a decrease of one point two million, or twenty eight percent, basically paying down the debt and changing pension liability, which decreased this year. So, like I said, overall, net position increased by eight percent. Out of the net position, we have our estate net position, which means that we can use this money for the operation. It's five point six million dollars, and restricted net position is six hundred sixty four thousand dollars, including there are the special reserve funds, which are restricted for those purposes. On page eight, we have the changes in acquisition. This is the revenue, the expenses, and how revenue exceeded expenses over the last year. So, total revenue, an increase of three point four percent, the six point two million, an increase to six point five million this year. And total expenses stay pretty much the same, only an increase of one point three percent, or sixty six thousand dollars. They increased from four point nine million to five million fifty five. And overall, the change in acquisition, which is an increase of one point four million dollars, and acquisition of this is twenty million four point four this year. The most significant changes, again, the increase in property taxes is the most significant increase in our revenue, and the operating grants and contributions decreased by a hundred and three thousand dollars, mostly because in 2023, we have the 2022 and 2023 grants, the per capita grant included in there, due to the fact that we see this year only reflects one year of per capita grant. We're going to go over to page ten. This presents the capital assets of the district and the upcoming negotiation, and on the bottom, you can see the long-term debt. So, basically, these are the long-term liabilities, long-term debt obligations of the district as six thirty twenty twenty-four in comparison to 2023. We're going to move over to the fund financial statements, to the balance sheet on page fourteen. So, these are the assets, liabilities, and fund balances by fund, like you are seeing with monthly meetings. So, overall, as you can see in the fund balance on the bottom of the page, most of the fund balance is assigned or committed for capital projects, so the most significant fund balance is presented in a special reserve fund. It's five million dollars. Then we have four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in general fund, and then all the other funds accumulated in non-major funds, six hundred fifty-three, which is the IMF, the working cash, the social security fund, and then the debt fund and the forty-nine thousand dollars fund balance at the end of the year. On page fifteen, no, sixteen, I'm sorry. So, on page sixteen, we have the revenue, the expenses of the district, and overall, revenue, the six point five million dollars revenue exceeded the five point six million dollars expenditures by a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. So, at the end of the year, the district presented six point five million dollars fund balance. In the notes, on page twenty-six, we have note number six, which presents the capital assets of the district, so you can kind of see the kind of assets of this test, and on the bottom, we have the accumulated depreciation, which gets deducted from the cost of the assets. So, at the end of the year, the district has sixteen million dollars, sixteen point five million dollars in capital asset, never accumulated depreciation. And on page twenty-seven, more detail, able with the long-term debt of the district, and on the bottom, we have the annual debt service requirements for the next three years. So, by 2027, the district should be able to pay off the bond. And one more thing that I usually highlight is on page thirty-seven, is the IMF special liability. So, at the end of the year, the liability was four hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. You can see it now with the 2023 column, which is a decrease from last year of about three hundred thousand dollars, which means that, basically, investments perform a lot better, since this number is largely influenced by how the market performs. But that was the special liability of the year. Is there any questions? I have a question. Thank you again for giving us the opportunity to serve the district, and I would feel so privileged. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to rule number seven. Rule number seven.
Motion to approve regular question lines from October twenty-three, twenty-four.
Seconded.
The new assessment, any further discussion? Please call the board.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Waller's?
Yes.
Conant? Yes. Deal?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you. Correspondents.
Martyr, we only have one thing in correspondence today. We had an email from the Park District. They thank us for all of our help. They had a all-day Park District meeting here, and had to come into the building early. It was just an email thanking us for that. We'll cast it around.
Okay. Number nine, financials, we need to approve the fund balance and revenue and expense reports.
Fund balance is on page number seven, and just wanted to note that the line that goes fund balances beginning on July first, 2023, those numbers are all going to change once the audit is approved. Those are going to be based off of the new audit, once it's actually approved by the board. So, those will be different when you see them next, in January. Otherwise, everything in the fund balances is as usual. And then, revenue and expense reports, there's nothing really outstanding in there. Any questions? I will say, in our revenue expense reports, we have gotten over ninety-nine percent of all of our property tax income.
Okay, I entertain a motion for approval of fund balance.
Motion for approval of fund balance, revenue and expense reports.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? All right, Jim, please.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Present.
Waller's?
Yes.
Conant abstained, deal?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, next is the opinion of the October 2024 bills.
Bills, you can start starting on page seventeen. A few things that are unusual, if you turn to page eighteen, EBSCO accounts receivable, that is our magazine periodic renewal for the entire year. Lower-down hoopla is, was nine thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-one cents. That is our highest ever. That is, if you don't use hoopla, it's basically e-materials, e-magazines, e-books, e-audio books, and it just increases in popularity every moment. Page nineteen, news bank, those are online newspapers. That is a yearly renewal amount, you only see that once a year as well. Those are the key things I've highlighted. Any questions on anything?
Okay, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the October 2024 bills in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and fifty. Seconded.
We'll consult with any other discussion. Okay, Jim, please go along.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Waller's?
Yes.
Conant abstained, deal?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Okay, we have the director's report.
Directors is what we found on page twenty-three. A few things of note, I kind of like to compare our numbers to October of last year, just to kind of see how we're doing, since there's a lot of fluctuation month to month in library attendance. Our door count, this October, we're up about twenty-five hundred more people visit the library this October than last October, so quite a significant number of additional people in the building. And last October versus this October, for physical books or materials checked out, not e-materials, we are up, close to nine thousand additional items were checked out this year over last October. So, I'm not sure why last October was low, but this October, we're doing really well.
And it's both branches?
That's combined, yes. I've broken down, Oswego had probably closer to like fifteen hundred more people, on Montgomery is closer to a thousand additional people in the building. So, there's always a little bit more in this building, but overall, quite easy. I have a few pictures in here. On page twenty-three, there's a picture from the youth services Halloween parade. Children came in for costume, they came in costume for a program, and then they went around to all the staff desks to trick-or-treating. It's always really fun for staff to see the kids in their little outfits. And on page twenty-four, at the bottom, the library staff, we did multiple trunk or treats, both the downtown one, and then we did, I think, the school one, and then two schools. And you see our program attendance number, in October, we saw over five thousand five hundred and sixty people at our programs. That was a big part of it, was all these trick-or-treating events that we were out at.
I went to my kid's school.
Were they?
It's awesome. Yes. They're always like, that's where mommy works, she's a librarian. I know, I'm like, in another life.
Anyone have any questions on the directors' report?
Is there any indication on the people of these who the library district visit the other libraries like Aurora, the bank keep silver stats?
I didn't call before, I don't know what they do, but we certainly double check. It's so interesting to see.
Well, isn't this dad, I mean, when I taught at a library, they, and I use my Oswego library card, they know that a patron has been there to check books out, I mean, they must have. They have something, they would have something, because they know.
Some part neighbor in libraries, if they're watching. So, great.
All right, anything else, otherwise I entertain a motion for approval of our director's report?
I move we approve the directors' report.
Motion seconded, any other thing else?
Freeman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Waller's?
Yes.
Conant, yes? Deal?
Yes.
Okay, committee reports, we just had a finance committee meeting, but I think we're fresh in our minds, I think we're okay there. I don't think there's any other reports, right? Under unfinished?
Sorry, that would need to be scheduled one for January, January.
All right.
Need personnel to discuss, early discussion of reassessments in January, starting the pledge process.
The regular meeting is on the twenty-second, right?
Usually just following the regular meeting, just how we've done in the past.
Okay, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, okay, let's fly on that.
I'm doubly sure, but I'll be there that time.
I make no promise. I'll try to be there.
So, the twenty-second, and what time, we're just going to go after? Will be in Montgomery?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a matter of going through this.
No.
They've never done that.
Okay, good, anything else, please? Unfinished business, the check signers policy.
So, you have all seen this policy last month as a first reading. You did vote previously to have me added as a check signer, or at least as a library director, actually, as a check signer, but we wanted to have the more formalized policy in writing, so this is your second reading of the policy.
And any, what do you want, a motion?
I move we approve the check signing policy.
Okay. Second. Motion seconded, any discussion? I think it's, looks like a sound policy, so, pretty good. Okay, Jim, please.
Freeman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Waller's?
Yes.
Conant, yes? Deal?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Okay, so the first piece of new business is accepting the audit?
And on page three-six is the notice that it's on the newspaper, if you choose to accept the audit.
I guess I don't have the objection to accepting the audit. Any other discussion, or else?
I make a motion to accept the independent libraries report for this year, January four, or as presented.
Second.
Seconded, any other discussion?
No, just to reach out.
Okay, Jim.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Waller's?
Yes.
Conant, yes? Deal?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Okay, so we are not going to be moving soon, so we should be able to pay our bills. So, historically, I think we've done this, where we pre- kind of pre-approved bill payment, there's still a mechanism for checking everything, which is Terry, so.
I always check everything.
I have confidence in you, so.
I made a minimal, I just made a motion. I make motion to approve a payment of late November and December bills, and will have regular December meeting to be reviewed by the treasurer and president, and approved by the library board in January, and it's regular payment.
All right, move seconded, any other discussion?
Deal?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Waller's?
Yes.
Conant, yes?
Okay, we have to appoint two people to review minutes.
You might do it last time.
I'm happy to do it again, unless somebody else wants to. So, I guess I'll appoint Emily and myself.
There you go.
Can we reduce the timeline on that?
It's every six months, so it just happens to be done by February.
We probably can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, next is discussion on the holiday gift for staff.
In the past, the board has, for a holiday gift, they have given staff a day off. Typically, for a full-time staff, it's a whole day, and for a part-time staff, it's four hours, since I'm just a blocker, but what they normally would be working for a day. And for this one, we would want to use five in a week.
I guess this worked out pretty well.
Yeah.
People are going to be happy with that, just their number one?
Definitely. If you could offer them anything, I think this would be, yeah.
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 I'll make a motion to approve a holiday gift for staff, consisting of one bonus holiday to be used by February twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, any additional discussion?
I did this at Lundy School, and I can tell you how much, I know for a fact how much you liked the holiday, all of us, it was very well received, very much appreciated.
Okay, Jim, please.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Waller's?
Yes.
Conant abstained, deal?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Okay, next we have the first reading of the rules enabled for use of library facilities.
So, that's on page twenty-seven. We revised it in 2020, but we have made some changes to include in the library, we allow it in designated areas. We also, like the cell phones, we would like to change to say that you can talk on the cellphone in designated areas, but phones and computers should not be in speaker. Lately, we've been having a lot of issues with people on speaker, or doing swimming pools on speaker, which even in the talking areas can be very disruptive. Recently passed on number four, we recently changed the unattended children to be fourteen instead of seven. And then we wanted to add a few in, number seven, was to say no animals in the library unless they were training service animals. We've had many people trying to bring in comfort animals, or therapy animal type animals who are not actually trained, including one gigantic dog that was very aggressive. So, I think we just want to be able to say it's our policy, but also make it clear that we're happy to help get books and materials, whatever they want, if they feel like can't use the library without their animal. Number eight, that wearing shirts and pants and shoes is required in the library. There's a shoeless movement going on around the area we hear. And also, I think we may, we may still add a few more things in before the final vote. I think we're talking about a swimming suit policy, because we've had people coming in in swimming suits before. Just a few things to kind of shore up some of the issues we've been having. They know what's made suits. We have that. We have that we both kind of remember.
Krista, I hate to ask this question, especially in light of the fact that in my job, when I mean one wants to talk about how people should dress at career fairs, and we have a code, I run away from those conversations as fast as I can. Having said that, number eight, I'm not opposed to people wearing shirts, pants, and shoes, but I would think there might be times when someone might be like, excuse me, what dress? And how do we?
I think they rephrase this a little bit, I don't really know. I mean, we had had people come in like underwear before, so we definitely want something to say, some sort of full coverage, but yeah, the wording maybe needs to be adjusted.
Yeah, I hate to even answer that question, but.
We'll see what other libraries maybe have phrased this.
It's good to be for sex, especially in this, because we might have to pull it out.
Right, sure.
Do you need to have a list of what not allowed? That could be a long one. Let's just keep it cold.
Please wear all your clothes.
So, I guess we take that in January?
Yes, we would be voting in January on the finalized version.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sadly, we have to require people to work hands, but I don't know what to say.
I'm, yeah, yeah. I'm extremely excited.
I wasn't here. Uh, let's see, we have any public comments tonight? Okay. Okay, the closed session, do we need to have a closed session? No, I think so, okay. And so, then move.
Well, I don't even want to do that close, do we have any updates on memory or anything like that?
Yeah.
And after that?
That would be, well, we didn't want to close.
Yeah, want to do that.
I thought I wanted to.
All right, so we'll need our motion to go in, we have the end range. All right, so, motion to end regular session, and then we can go to the office.
Yes.
Present for.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we would accept a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I second.
Move in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Richard, thank you.
Thank you.